I'd like to call the Tuesday, November first, two thousand twenty-two Papillion City Council meeting into order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday.
Here.
Mumgarth.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Glover.
Here.
Jaworski.
Here.
Klug.
Here.
Stube.
Here.
Ingberg.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
The current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We have a presentation tonight. We were going to have it last council meeting, but we had a number of presentations, so they were kind enough to put it off. But we've got a couple of representatives from the Mayor's Youth Council come and give us a quarter of the report. Want to go ahead and come up? And for the sake of everybody, if you'd state your name for the record when you come up. Welcome.
My name is Ashley Gast. Do I need to state my address? Do I need to state my address for the record? Okay. Say your name.
My name is Christine Holder.
All right. Thank you all for allowing us to present our list of our current activities, both past and present. So we're happy to present to you our second quarterly report, which will chronicle our activities from July through October. So starting with July, we had a Humane Society donation campaign in which the community came together to donate needed items to the Humane Society Town and Country. We got plenty of items from like toys to food to blankets, just things that they needed across the board, and we were able to give all of that to the Humane Society, and they were quite grateful. We would also like to congratulate Ellie Farron Crowe of the Youth Council on her appointment as secretary. In August, members helped at the kids' triathlon. This council was scheduled to help with National Night Out, but of course, due to heat, that event was canceled. But then, in the middle of the month, we also had one of our fundraisers as a car wash for the At Firestone Auto Repair. We want to say thank you very much to Firestone for allowing us to have our car wash there and to always being supportive of our fundraisers.
So much of September, most of the month, we were planning events for October in the upcoming holiday season. We assisted with the naturalization ceremony at the historical schoolhouse. This month, we hosted our first Hispanic Heritage Celebration at First Street Plaza. We want to thank all the organizations that provided their services at the event and for the support from the city. We also want to thank our chairpersons for the event, which were Kiara and Hema of Montiel, for organizing everything and leading the charge. Later in the month, we assisted the Recreation Department with the Sumpter Dash. We also held a barbecue bonding party for the youth council and their families. Our last event this month was passing out candy and helping to run the Halloween safe night. The youth council will be sending a few members to the National League of Cities City Summit. We deeply thank the City of Papillion for funding this opportunity for members. Upper council member Jackson Shelborn is designing caps for the Mayor's Youth Council. We would also like to congratulate Jenna Woodard for being appointed to the Youth Advocacy Board of Dare International. We know she will be a great representative of Nebraska. As always, we continue to do our monthly road cleanups and maintain the pollinator garden. We'll be cleaning up this garden on November fifth. We, the members of the Papillion Mayor's Youth Leadership Council, thank Mayor Black, Amber Powers, and Amber Powers for their continued support and guidance with our endeavors. We can express how much it means to us and the youth of the city to Papillion, and we hope this support continues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for everything you're doing. Any questions, council? Thank you very much for everything you do. Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. Just a reminder, if you have any legislation that you think we should be working on, Mayor Black and I can take that to United Cities and to the League to work on that. The next Nebraska Legislative Session convenes on January fourth. And along similar lines, the Sarpy County Mayor's Administrators met with Senator Fisher yesterday to discuss what successes and challenges we're all facing. Funding for the sewer agency and other infrastructure needs were discussed, along with all the great things that are going on. And several great Halloween events were held over the past week. Overall, it was quiet for the Police Department with no major events between the spook and sip, kids trick-or-treating, and all the many trunk-or-treat events, so it's great to hear that. And thank you to everyone that made all these events such great successes. It's events like these that make Papillion feel like home. And speaking of feeling like home, Winter Wonderland is fast approaching. A new addition to the lights this year, you'll notice that City Hall has had permanent lights installed, and they're purple and orange for Halloween, which is really neat, and they'll change for Christmas. And then they'll also be on all year long, like the other downtown buildings. Thank you to Tony and his team for coordinating those lights, and also the Winter Wonderland lights and the Halloween lights, a lot of cool things. And then this Thursday, November third, if you stop by City Hall in the late afternoon, you may notice that the Sarpy County Chambers' Modern Professionals will be touring City Hall. And the Modern Professionals choose a different location to tour in the county each month, and they learn more about that location. So we're honored that they chose City Hall to come and tour and learn about. Then the American Legion Post thirty-two, in conjunction with the city, will hold their annual Veterans Day event on Friday, November eleventh, Veterans Day at eleven a.m. at Veterans Park. And then also just a reminder that the city offices will be closed that day, as well in observation of the holiday. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Klug. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Next is item D one, an ordinance to amend the fiscal two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget. Is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilwoman Klug. D two, ordinance nineteen eighty, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R four multifamily residential. For the property legally described as tax lot nine, tax lot one being tax lot two, all located in section three, township thirteen north, range twelve east of the six p.m. Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located southwest of South Eighty-Fourth Street and Shram Road. The applicant's Richland Homes Shadow Creek. Is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Stube. D three, ordinance nineteen eighty-one, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R four multifamily residential. For the property legally described as attractive land located in all of Outlot D seventy-two Place, together with part of the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter, located in section one, township thirteen north, range twelve east of the six p.m. Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located southeast of Seventy-Second Street and Shram Road. The applicant's Papio Park LLC, seventy-two Place Phase Two. Is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. D four, ordinance nineteen eighty-two, an ordinance to rename Mesa Street as dedicated by the Overland Hills Five Final Platte to be South Ninety-seventh Street. Is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Gaines. If there is no objection of council, I'd like to move item F four ahead of F one. F four is just a liquor license, and some of the other items could be more discussion, so didn't know if the applicant wanted to sit through all the other items. So if there's no objection, I'm going to move F four. You okay with that, Ms. Brown? Okay. Item F four. Let me get to it. Resolution R twenty-two zero one eight-six, a resolution to approve Kenneth C. Eastwood as the corporate manager for Fraternal Order of Eagles, RE forty-twenty-nine, doing businesses Fraternal Order of Eagles forty-twenty-nine for their Class C liquor license. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-two zero one eight-six? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents or opponents? Is the applicant here? Okay. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Now we're back to F one. Ready? Okay. Item F one, ordinance nineteen seventy-nine, an ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code, section one seventeen dash four and one seventeen dash eleven, to revise the number of firework sales licenses, to amend firework regulations, and to provide for an effective date. Is there a motion to approve ordinance nineteen seventy-nine? Mr. Mumgarth.
I would make a motion to hold the public hearing today, but to hold over the vote for two weeks to the next meeting, we need to have... It's come to my attention, we need to talk more with the distributors, the fireworks people, to explain what this is all about, and we don't need to adopt this tonight.
Mr. Gaines.
I would like to make a substitute motion to reopen the public hearing and postpone it for two weeks so that we're able to give notice under the Open Meetings Act, and also allow people that want to speak the opportunity to have the notice.
We have a motion. We had a motion. We got a substitute motion. Do we have a... You'll second the substitute?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. You okay with that, Ms. Mumgarth? And...
Can I... Okay, I need to ask a question about what the substitute wants to do.
What it would do is, my understanding, and we talked with legal about a situation earlier that just falls into it. So your motion was to open the public hearing tonight, and then the vote to put off.
I'll withdraw my motion. Let's go with Mr. Gaines.
Yeah, so his intent is to go ahead and open the public hearing, however, don't hold it tonight. Hold it in two weeks so we can actually publicize it as a public hearing. That way we've got proper public notice, as opposed to just doing it tonight.
It's the proper public notice that I'm questioning. What did we not do that would not be proper public notice?
I'll let the city attorney. She can explain it better than me. And on that motion, I just want to clarify before she answered, Mr. Gaines, the intent would be to, at the next meeting, to open the public hearing, but then also item F one, vote that night. So you're carrying... You're opening the public hearing, noticing it for next council meeting, but still doing F one at the next council meeting. Is that the intent?
That's right.
Okay. Do you want to explain the notice and why not tonight?
Our city ordinance sets all public comments on ordinances for the second hearing. That was held at our last council meeting. It was appropriately published for the last council meeting. It was not published for tonight's meeting to be a public hearing. And pursuant to our city ordinance, the public comments are held at the second, not at the third hearing. So the motion that Councilmember Gaines has made to both reopen the public hearing, but also have it held at the next council meeting, would allow us to publish in the agenda for the next council meeting that it will be a reopened public hearing. Having done that, then you are... It would still be the third reading, so it would be public hearing and third reading, and so you would go ahead and take your vote, assuming there's no other motions. Next council meeting, you would go ahead and have your vote at the conclusion of debate.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
So there's a motion and a second, and the motion is to open the public hearing, however, to have it at the next council meeting, so we can do our normal publication of the agenda. And then the third reading will also be then follow that public hearing at the next council meeting. Any questions on the motion and the second? Any discussion? Please vote. A yes vote would open the public hearing at the next council meeting, and no vote would keep it third reading tonight.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item F two, resolution R twenty-two zero one eight-two, a resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as part of the east half of the northwest quarter lying east of the abandoned Missouri Pacific Railroad, together with tax lot one A in the west half of the northeast quarter, all in section thirty-one, township fourteen north, range twelve east of the six p.m. Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southeast and southwest corners of South One Hundred and Twenty-Sixth Street and Highway three seventy. The applicant's Founders Ridge LLC, Founders Ridge Phase Two. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-two zero one eight-two? Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilwoman Klug. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item F three, a resolution to approve the Third Amendment to the Founders Ridge subdivision agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-two zero one eight-three? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Gaines. Proponents or opponents? And I will note for the record, the applicant is here. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. F four, we already took care of. So item F five, resolution R twenty-two zero one nine-three, a resolution to approve a purchase agreement between the City of Papillion and Tri-City Food Pantry for a portion of tax lot thirty-one, section twenty-six, township fourteen north, range twelve east of the six p.m. Sarpy County, Nebraska, consisting of approximately two point six seven acres. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-two zero one nine-three? Motion by Councilman Sunday? Second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents? Welcome. If you'd state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Chris Nkennios, five three three, South One Hundred and Second Street, La Vista, Nebraska. Thank you for having me again. I was here a couple of weeks ago. Last time I was here, kind of discussed what the pantry has been up to and what our plans are, especially with this new building. You know, I kind of talked a little bit about how we were providing essential food and household goods for the residents of Papillion. We all know what kind of economic stress we're in right now. In September of two thousand twenty-two, we served two hundred and three households compared to ninety-eight a year ago. We also served seven hundred and twenty clients compared to three hundred and thirty-three a year ago. And so obviously, our numbers have doubled in the past year. In addition, with the rise in prices for food and dairy, our resources have been put to the limit, and we've been responding and serving the people of Papillion very well. In addition to serving our clients, we're also putting in plans... Putting in place plans to serve as a distribution point and a point of care for when disasters like tornadoes, floods, natural disasters happen. We've been working with the Sarpy County Emergency Management Agency, and they have fully endorsed this new building, this new location, as the perfect spot for that distribution point and to be that collection point, the place to get water, food, power when those disasters hit. So we're putting those plans in place as well. And while this purchase agreement is just the next step in what our plans are, it is an important step for us. It allows us to continue the progress we've made since December when we launched our capital campaign. It allows us to pursue financing options with the hope of breaking ground in just a couple of months. And so this is very important for the citizens of Papillion, and we are very much urge you to carefully consider this purchase agreement.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? Mr. Mumgarth.
I'm going to vote for this. I've been, throughout the lengthy discussion we've had about this internally, I've been very strongly in favor of, we have to do what we have to do to have Tri-City Pantry in Papillion. Now, this purchase agreement has some kind of unique funding elements. I think that's worthwhile. And bottom line, if we're going to call ourselves the town that feels like home, then having the organization whose purpose is to help their neighbors in need should be in Papillion. That was my position from the beginning. That is not an organization that locates anywhere in Sarpy County except Papillion.
Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item, it's all the regular agenda items, and I don't think any... No, one committee did meet. Public facilities... No. Public safety met. Ms. Klug, you're the chair.
We did meet. We are continuing to work on the maintenance code for the... Property Maintenance Code, excuse me. We had a lot of great work. The attorneys have gone through. We are working very hard to make sure that we have one spot for our citizens to go to, as opposed to having to go all over in our code, and then all over in international codes. So it's taking a bit longer, but today we made some pretty significant strides on what we need to accomplish. It is our goal to meet again in two weeks, right before the next meeting in November, to continue on that. And depending on how that meetings go, we are very hopeful within the next month to four meetings that we will be bringing something forward for the entire council to review and look at.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the floor? Welcome. Oh, they're leaving. I thought they were coming up. Yes. And if you'd state your name and address for the record.
My name is Beth Norris, and I live at twenty-four twenty-five Corn Drive here in Papillion. I am here today. I know we just only did the first reading of the ordinance nineteen eighty for the Shadow Creek neighborhood, and I know that the public discussion is, I understand, by law, you can't just... You guys cannot ask questions and discuss it, and that will be at the next reading. So I will be at that next meeting, but there are a few things I thought I should bring up that might make next meeting a little more fruitful. I am not opposed to that subdivision being developed. What I have grave concerns about is that the main entrance and exit for this neighborhood that will have about three hundred households, if each household has two cars, we've got six hundred cars, the main entrance and exit will be Eighty-Fourth Street via Corn Drive. I live on Corn Drive right now. Typically, we take a right-hand turn coming out in the mornings to head to work and such. The traffic coming from the south on Eighty-Fourth Street can be very busy. We're talking about putting in a neighborhood that could potentially have about six hundred cars, with the only main arterial exit being Corn Drive to Eighty-Fourth. They're talking about building Ninetieth Street, and everything else will route through neighborhoods to get in and out. Everybody likes to take the fastest, easiest way out, which is going to be Corn Drive onto Eighty-Fourth. They are going to have to do a left-hand turn for the majority of the people who live there, because most of the jobs are north of Corn Drive. Left-hand turns are notoriously dangerous. Eighty-Fourth Street should be renamed to the Eighty-Fourth Street International Speedway, and I have grave concerns about there's no plans for a stoplight. So, when I was at the planning meeting, the Planning Commission required the Richland Homes, I believe is the LLC, required them to do a traffic study, which I'm positive they did it, because I saw the vehicle sitting out there on my corner. So I think the traffic study should be made available to the city council and the public prior to the next city council meeting, so we all have time to review it. I think the planning committee, they were pretty certain that the City of Papillion at that point is the one who decides who can put in a traffic light or not, because the highway has ended at that point, whereas where we had the fatal accident here with Abbey on Eighty-Fourth Street, that was because it was a highway that wasn't regulated by the City of Papillion. But the planning committee was fairly certain that the City of Papillion is the one who would make the decision about that traffic light. So I think whoever is in... Whoever makes that decision within the city should be at the next meeting, so we can have fruitful discussions. And then I think the third thing ought to be their plan, how the heavy equipment and construction vehicles will enter and exit the construction area. I highly doubt Ninetieth Street will be built at that time, thus leaving only Eighty-Fourth and where Corn Drive is going to be, to be the main entrance and exit. And if you are heading south, south on Eighty-Fourth, as you approach Corn Drive, you do know there is a hill there that you start to come down, and the line of traffic site there is diminished. And so if you're talking about a heavy vehicle coming down over that hill, you know, everybody who lives and drives on that street is going to have to deal with that heavy construction equipment being on that road, and they're going to have a... They have... It takes them a much longer time to break if, you know, if they need to, because somebody has pulled out into the roadway in the intersection there. So in preparation for that meeting, I just... My recommendation as a citizen of Papillion is that we have these three things prepared and ready and available by before and by the next meeting, so we can have fruitful discussions on this. And I am here because my own son, my youngest son, was killed in a car accident at an intersection on One Hundred and Eightieth and Highway three seventy, where the construction was still going on. They had not done the traffic study to put the light in. Shortly after his accident, they went ahead and put the light in. That accident happened nine years ago, just this past month, October eleventh. It was nine years ago that this happened. You can hear my voice. I'm still deeply affected. And this Saturday, he would have been turned twenty-five years old. So I am very, very deeply concerned about this intersection, and I'm very deeply involved in it. And I will follow this all the way that I can, and I will be here. And if things don't go our way, and there are serious accidents, you all will hear from me, because it is... It will be the city council's decision, and the... I don't know if it's the Safety Department, whoever is responsible for making that decision. It falls on you and the administration of the city to make that a safe intersection. Like I said, I don't oppose the neighborhood at all. I appreciate that they actually are adding some more affordable housing with some options with multiplexes, which Papillion desperately needs. So again, not opposed to the neighborhood at all. I just think as, you know, citizens of the city, you need to think about the safety of your citizens and be proactive and not reactive, such as the case with my son's death.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Seen none. Any council comments? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. My name is John Lowens, one one nine oh nine, south forty-eight, six eight one three three. I am representing Shepherds Incorporated, and I just wanted to express my gratitude to postpone tonight's final reading and give us a chance to regroup and think about how additional tents are going to affect every one of the fourteen current stands in the city. So thank you.
Thank you. And that will be at the next council meeting, so go ahead and come back. Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Other than the council, I don't think so. Any council comments? Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. Ms. Klug.
If I could, real quick, we had a constituent contact a few of us about the glare at the landing in the morning when they're playing pickleball, so I took the opportunity to go and stop by a few days later. I think it was two days after I received my email. I just want to give compliments. The first thing they said to me was they love the facility. They love how they're greeted when they get there every morning, and that Tracy and a group of them had already come and seen them and taken action. I think that speaks pretty loudly for the people that are running that complex for us and making sure that we're meeting citizens' needs. I know there's discussion about it. Hopefully, we can find some ways to help them. I just wanted to really point out that I think that's significant responsiveness for a city when we get to our constituents within a couple of days. And so thank you to all of them that are working down there.
Big thank you to Tracy and the staff for that as well. Mr. Ingberg.
You may be going to mention this anyway, but I wanted to publicly thank Mike Kleppner and the Public Works staff for the fall cleanup days. Again, very successful, and heard a lot of good comments from people, especially those that did it for the first time. And they were really appreciative of how smooth it ran and how quickly they got in and out and how safe it was. So my thanks to Public Works.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
That reminds me. That just reminded me of something that I've kind of been thinking about. I agree with you that it went really well. I've often wondered, why don't we have it a little later in the year, so we can catch more of the leaves? Have we ever given any thought to that?
I don't know the answer, but we'll take it back to staff.
I still see a lot of leaves on the trees, and I thought, maybe if we waited a few more weeks, it would actually be better.
And I don't know if the bulk of what's going there is leaves, so I don't know if that played into the decision, but we'll go ask and reevaluate it. Thank you. Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. Met with the arts organizations again on the potential arts foundation, working through potential bylaws if that agreement comes together. Hopefully, we'll know in about the next four to six weeks, I think, if that'll come together or not. The wastewater agency had its meeting again. Nothing major came out of this last month's meeting. The construction has started on segments three and four, which is again that area south of Papillion and then east into Bellevue. So that project has been let, and the construction has started there. And almost all of the right-of-way that's needed has been acquired. There's just a couple of that are in final negotiation of right-of-way, but it's not holding up the construction. Bellevue Chamber held a mayor's forum with all five cities in Sarpy plus Plattsmouth and Ralston, so everybody kind of gave a regional update on what was going on. It was just amazing to hear the volume of activity that every single city is dealing with and what's going on down in this area. It's incredible. And then the Sarpy Chamber had its annual awards, so congrats to all of the businesses that were recognized there. And then just a couple of the reminders, on November tenth, at four p.m., Lux Grill is having a ribbon cutting. And then just a couple of the reminders, on November 10th, at 4:00 p.m., Lux Grill is having a ribbon cutting. Again, the next day, Ms. Powers mentioned, on the 11th, at 11:00 a.m. is the Veterans Day Ceremony with American Legion Post 32 at Veterans Park, and then at noon right after that, Inspired Dental is having their ribbon cutting. And then, again, the last reminder, anything legislatively that you're thinking about that we need to keep an eye on or any legislation we might need to be thinking about proposing, be letting us know. It might even be getting a little too late for this session, but we're heading into the two-year, first year of the two-year biennium. So we can be working on legislation now that'll be introduced and worked on in the second year, so it's not too early. So if any of that comes to mind, let us know. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
We are adjourned.